We'll call to order the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, Business Meeting Tuesday, August 15th, 2017, General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Haggerman.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Barkstow.
Present.
Mr. Warren.
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with us, please. Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Are there items to be added to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. So we just approved a consent agenda, too, without the other? We will now have the hearing of our citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate you speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard. The hearing of citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining. I will call you in the order you signed up. And we have no one that signed up tonight. Okay? And then the consent agenda, which we...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve your consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. It will now move to public hearing for rezoning cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Supervisors, have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environmental and the comprehensive plan and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases would be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for case number one, ASK and CLTD, and we'll open that public hearing at 7:04. Mr. Sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case 17-024 has been asked and seen limited. The petition to rezone 0.30 acres located on State Road 686, Dan Road in the Vassler Election District, from RC 1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. Once property is rezoned to A1, all use is listed under Section 35-178, are permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Kent Flattman, who represents the petition...
Mr. Flattman, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Just, if you all have any questions.
Thank you, sir. We may, in a moment. No one signed up for this public hearing, so I will close the public hearing at 7:05. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and I make a motion that we approve case one, R-17-024, to rezone 0.30 of an acre from RC-1, which is residential combined subdivision district, to A1 agricultural district. It is mentioned also in the recommendation there. This is not a case of spot zoning.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Your property has been rezoned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to case two, John L. Robertson and Lori J. Robertson. Mr. Sides, we'll open the public hearing for this one at 7:07.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Case two, R-17-025, John and Laura Robertson have petitioned to rezone 0.09 of an acre located on State Road 952, Blackbird Place, in the Tunstall Election District, from RC 1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. Once the property is rezoned to R1, then all use is listed under Section 35-222, or a permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Robertson should be here to represent the petition.
Mr. Robertson?
Mr. Robertson, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you. No one signed up to speak to this issue also. So I close the public hearing at 7:09. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-17-0125, I'd like to make a motion, we rezone this part from RC 1 to R1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Haggerman. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out, I had no calls on this, no opposition. Back when I was a child, you wanted to build something, you went behind your house, built it. This is common. They just want to clean the property up. They didn't even realize he was on somebody else's property side. Glad they're getting it cleaned up.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Robertson and Ms. Robertson, your property has been rezoned. Thank you. We'll move along to case number three, Willie B. Gwill Jr. and Tracy B. Gwill. We'll open that public hearing at 7:10. Mr. Sides.
All right, Mr. Chairman. In case three, R-17-026, Willie and Tricia Gwill have petitioned to rezone 1.68 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General. The parcel is located on State Road 641 Delta Drive in the Stanton River Election District. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all use is listed under Section 35-365, or a permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Willie Gwill and Dakota Dillard should be here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Gwill. Mr. Dillard, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you for being here. We may have questions. We'll call you back.
Yes, sir.
I will close the public hearing because no one signed up at 7:11. Board's desire.
Mr. Chairman, in case three, R-17-026, Willie B. Gwill Jr. and Tricia P. Gwill, I make a motion that we rezone the property from R1 to B2. Received one phone call just inquiring what was going on. Other than that, no opposition, and I think this fits in well with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Dillard, your property's been rezoned. Mr. Gwill and Mr. Dillard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck to you.
Case four, we will open at 7:13. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case four, R-17-027, Lucy Dillard has petitioned to rezone a total of 24 acres, two parcels of land, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. The parcels are located on State Road 713, Oak Grove Road, in the Dan River Election District. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, all use is listed under Section 35-178, or a permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Sheila Davidson and Kimberly Wiles are here to represent the petition.
Ms. Davidson and Ms. Wiles, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. We may have some questions. If we do, we'll call you back up. Thank you. I will close the public hearing at 7:14. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case number four, R-17-027, Ms. Lucy Dillard requesting to rezone these properties from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. I've had no calls, no opposition, and I agree that it fits in with comprehensive plan. I've walked the property. It's a beautiful piece of property. So I make the motion that we grant this request.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion? All in favor... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Flippin, roll call.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Your property has been rezoned, Ms. Davidson and Ms. Wiles. Thank you. Moving along to item seven, public hearing to receive citizens' input on proposed amendment to Section 35-179, special use permit that would add the following temporary use rodeos. Mr. Smithelman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give Mr. Sides a piece of paper to give you a briefing on how this change would be implemented in the special use section.
Thank you. Mr. Sides.
Mr. Hunt may be available to answer the legal aspects, but in general, we receive a request to... for someone to schedule and hold a temporarily based rodeo, and we did not have a good place in our zoning ordinance for a temporary use rodeo. We have a temporary use that allows other uses, but it didn't specifically mention rodeo. So therefore, the Planning Commission proposed that the ordinance be amended, and they held their public hearing. The Planning Commission has voted to recommend it to the Board of Supervisors. The amendment has been properly advertised, and so we're proposing to not amend it to Section 35-179 to allow, under special use permits, temporary uses rodeos. And again, if there's any legal questions as far as how this fits in the ordinance, I'd refer those to Mr. Hunt.
Okay. No citizen signed up of this public hearing, so we don't need to open the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
You need to open it in the...
Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing at 7:16 and close the public hearing at 7:16 because no one signed up. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to make the motion that we grant this request for the temporary uses of the rodeos, put in our ledger, as Mr. Sides had just pointed out.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Okay. Public hearing number two, to receive citizens' input on the disposal of the following two parcels of publicly owned property via a public auction as follows. Lot number one, 2.1 acres located on SR 729 Millstream Drive, Gretna, Virginia, GPN number 2530-38-8407, and lot number two, 3.4 acres located on SR 729 Millstream Drive, Gretna, Virginia, GPN number 2530-48-0335. Mr. Sides.
I'll take this one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Smithelman. It's been to Mr. Sides' show so far.
It has. It has, and he's done a great job. Last month, the board considered two requests to declare these two parcels surplus. You directed us to hold this... to schedule this public hearing for this evening. Your decision last month was to hold the public hearing, and I believe to set a minimum bid of tax value, which is $51,400 for the disposition of this property. So tonight's public hearing is required in order to declare the property's surplus.
We will open the public hearing at 7:18, and we will close the public hearing at 7:18 as no one signed up. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we surplus the said two parcels as listed in page 145 of our packet.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Item nine, public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2507, to hear citizens' input on proposed amendments to the county budget for fiscal year 2018.
We are having tonight's public hearing because we need to adjust our 2018 budget, and because it exceeds 1% of our adopted budget, it is a requirement under Section 15.2-2507 that states that we can make that amendment, but if it does exceed the 1%, that we would hold a public hearing to hear citizen input on that. We have to advertise at least once a week, two weeks, or at least seven days before your public hearing, and we've done that. It ran in the Star Tribune on August the 2nd, so that has met that qualification, and we would like for the citizens to give us input on these amendments. And then after those... the hearing and whatever your pleasure is, you can actually vote on that amendment tonight. It does not have to lay over for 10 days because it's been in circulation now for almost three weeks now. So I would ask that we would have the public hearing now, and if you all have any questions before we hold the public hearing, you should have gotten an attachment that said where everything was going.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhaid. Please stay up in case anyone has any questions. We will open that public hearing at 7:19, and we will close the public hearing at 7:19 as no one signed up. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and appropriate a total of $3,511,614.26 to the fiscal year 2018 budget, which includes a total of $860,374.88 for the county budget amendments and carryovers, and a total of $2,651,239.38 for school carryovers.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion from the board? Questions from Ms. Vanderhaid? Okay, Ms. Flippin, roll call? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a comment, because the public's here tonight, so I may not have been to work session. We've discussed this. We've been in work sessions and meetings since 3:30, and so we're not just sitting up here voting on something right and left without no... without discussion. We've been talking about it the whole afternoon, so I'd like to thank Ms. Vanderhaid for being very helpful during the work session.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Discussion?
I concur with Mr. Blackstock on that she does a wonderful job.
I think we all would echo that comment, Ms. Vanderhaid. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhaid. Item 10, Human Resource Matters, 10A Group Health Insurance for Retirees, and this is going to be handled by Ms. George? Oh, Mr.... Yeah, Ms. George. Thought that was you back there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you in your executive summary, you have a request to continue the one-time contributions that was approved last renewal for the Health Savings Accounts contributions of $500. Currently, we are in our open enrollment period, and we have 15 employees that are on the plan. We would like to continue that as an incentive to encourage our employees to migrate towards our luminous, high deductible health plan, and with that information in mind, in the summary, we have a total of what's estimated to cost to have these employees insured with the one-time contribution. We have a $7,500 total. Right now, it's hard to say how many we will have migrate over, but by the end of August, we should have a number. This is a good incentive because we know that if we have some skin in the game, so to speak, that will encourage our employees to also want to participate in the Health Savings Account. And as we know, those are pre-tax dollars. It's theirs to keep and to use for health-related expenses. They can take it with them when they leave. It's for family members as well. They can contribute towards the cost of health coverage as long as they meet the IRS requirements that shows that it is health-related. With that being said, our October 1 effective date is approaching for our renewal, and we respectfully ask your approval to continue the HSA contributions of $500.
Yes, just for the board, we're on 10B right now, which is actually on page P-179 in your packet. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the request to grandfather in current retiree...
No, no. Page 179 is where we're at now.
I still make a motion that we approve to continue to contribute $500 to destined HSA members as well as employees choosing a high deductible health plan that becomes effective October 1st, 2017.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barkstow, seconded by Mr. Davis.
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This continue... it might be better if it said annually, but the purpose and the intent is this is an annual contribution, not a second one-time contribution. So I just want to clarify that to the board.
Is everybody clear on that? It will be perpetual? Any discussion? Any questions?
No, sir, but I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Mr. Davis, Mr. Barkstow, and then Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Haggerman. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is group health insurance retirees on page 178.
Okay. Okay. In your executive summary, you also will find a recommendation to, I would say, more closely coordinate our benefits with the Pennsylvania County School Board. Currently, our retirees remain on the county's self-insured plan. We have 14 retirees now, and as most may know, this is a costly option for them because premiums... monthly premiums for them can reach over $600. So also to keep in mind, retire utilization also has an impact on the group health rates, being that we're self-insured. So therefore, the staff recommends that the county grandfather in our current retirees that we have, and allow the county to roll off retirees once they become Medicare eligible, mirroring the school board. Looking at recent retirees that we're seeing that we don't foresee that this will be an issue because we're showing that they are finding their own supplemental coverages, so they're not coming on to the plan, and I think this is just because retirees are becoming better informed about their options and therefore finding coverage elsewhere. And also, just know as a proactive effort that we are providing additional education, such as onsite Medicare seminars at minimum, at least once a year and in between as needed. Most recently, we had our first Medicare seminar earlier this year, and we received positive feedback on those results, and it was very helpful. We established points of contact to help our retirees move in the right direction. So with this information in mind, the staff respectfully request the board's approval to grandfather in our current retirees and allow us to roll off Medicare-eligible retirees again October 1st, 2017 during our open enrollment period, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Board's pleasure. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request of grandfather-in-current retirees over age 65 under the county group health plan... insurance plan, and approve the request that effective October 1st, 2017, all current retirees under the age of 65 enrolled in the group health plan will be removed when they become Medicare eligible.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barkstow. Any discussion, gentlemen? I'll just make one comment. I was really happy to hear that you're doing the education seminars for our seniors. In particular, I hope the effort will be made to inform the 14 people that still are occupying that group health plan because they're paying for coverage and not getting the full benefit of the coverage because they have to sign up for Part A of the Medicare, which...
Right.
...gives them the hospitalization. So that part of the benefit that they're paying for from the group health plan is non-existent for them. So they're paying for something they really not getting. So I think we educate them on the Part B and the supplement coverage and all that. That's a tremendous kudos to you for doing that, and please keep up the good work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Mr. Smithelman, does this need to be a roll call? It doesn't show as a roll call. Ms. Flippin?
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Item 11, Community Policies Management Team. Mr. Smithelman and Ms. Boswell.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Boswell.
I thought you would.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is just the policy that we discussed at the work session back in June, I do believe it was, and you asked that I get clarification from the state on making sure that we are following our quality improvement plan and our corrective action plan that was set up in 2012, I do believe, after we had the state audit, the unspeakable state audit that we had. I put the email correspondence with Stephanie Bakote, who is the state program auditor. She's over all the audits for the state for CSA, and our correspondence and her response to my questions in reference to the attendance policy. In my reading, it doesn't seem to be anything in changing the policy that would go against our quality improvement plan, our corrective action plan by changing it, but it is completely up to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Yes, sir. Mr. Barkstow.
My question is, you look, it says that CGMT members...
My question is, you look, it says that CPMT members, the alternates, shall attend 75% of regularly scheduled meetings unless mitigated circumstances and all of that. So, what is the difference when it says alternates should not attend more than 25%?
Well, I, I wrote it that way to intend, the, the original resolution and in the policy, it says 75% of meetings for members. So, members have to attend 75% of all meetings. They can only miss three. Their alternates can sit in their place in those three meetings, but they're still not counted as, that agency is still not counted as present. And they would still be responsible in reporting to the board of supervisors if they missed more than those three meetings. And changing that, we would be allowing for the alternate to sit in place of the member and be counted as present instead of absent. So, if, all in all, if they still miss more than, between the member and the alternate miss more than three meetings, they would still need to report to the board of supervisors. So, it's not changing that. It's just making it where the alternate can sit in place of the member in those absences, and it be counted, it not be counted against them. But I don't want the members to miss, really to miss more than 25% of meetings, or the alternates not to attend more than 25% of the meetings, because then we start getting into the member themselves are not, are not attending the meeting. And that, to me, alludes back to the original problem of that they were having people sit in place of who was supposed to be sitting on the board originally. So, I didn't want to see that come back into play.
Do any of the board members have a problem with that?
Mr. Scares?
Nothing. It just reads very odd to me.
I don't really have a, a problem with the statement, but do I need an alternate? I serve on the, the
We'll have to address that.
I haven't missed any meetings, by the way.
He hasn't. I'll report that next month.
Basically, what the change is saying is the member can attend 50% of the meetings, and the alternate can, can attend the other 25%. And it would cover, because neither one of them combined would miss more than three meetings.
Right. Neither one combined would miss more than three meetings. So, they would still not be able to be an open seat more than three times throughout the year. But instead of it counting against when the member misses, then the alternate would be able to sit in that place and it not, because right now, we count it as absent. So, if, if the alternate sits in, then they would, we would count that agency as present up until they've missed more than the 25% together, member and alternate. I mean, I, it may can be worded in a better way.
With y'all's permission, we understand your desire. I agree with you. I think this needs to be massaged a little bit. What I'll do with your permission is massage it, send it around, make sure it's okay. If it is, we'll go forward. I, I think it needs to state that alternates will only be, their organization will only be counted as present if alternatives, the alternates can only attend, you know, three of those meetings. What you're saying like right now is they can only attend three. You're saying they only count to three, and their organization will be counted as present for those?
Right.
There's, there's another call.
It's, it's a very good point, Mr. Barkstall, because it, it is kind of unusual readings because the way it reads now, the alternate could be there every time they weren't there. And if it was six and six, they gonna show as 75% and not 100%.
Right. And that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm going for.
I'll fix it. I'll, I'll, it's okay. I'll give y'all some good sense. We, we know your intention.
I apologize.
Kind of sounds like it's a glass half-full.
Well, I've read it a lot of times, and I kind of thought it didn't sound exactly right myself. But I was like, I don't really know exactly what.
You wouldn't care if alternates, if alternates came to every meeting to, for institutional knowledge, if they can only be counted as present three times?
Right. They can come to every meeting, but their member, I don't want it to become where the alternate is sitting in place of the member all of the time, because that's not, I feel like then we're moving back into that, where we could get back into gray area and get in trouble.
And we do have some situations, I, I believe they did when I was on there, that sometimes the alternate's there and the primary's there.
Right. And that's fine. And only one is counted, usually the member is counted as present and
Mr. Smitherman, is this something we need to act on, or can we defer it for a month?
Yeah, just, let's make a motion about what your intent is, and then we will fix it. And I'll, I'll shoot it around, make sure everybody's okay.
All right. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion
Okay.
that we amend the Pennsylvania County Community Policy and Management Team's attendance policy to whatever they, Attorney Mr. Hunt applies to.
Just make a motion that we will change the CPMT attendance policy to reflect the board's intent that alternates can attend no more than 25% of regularly scheduled meetings and the organization of the county is present. And the language would be provided to the board.
So moved.
Is that your motion? Okay. Motion made by Scares, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
Just one point.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt, you're an attorney. He's talking about massaging. In this county, you gotta have a license to massage.
That's bad words.
Can we work on my alternate now?
No.
A word, Smith.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Hunt, we don't need a role call on this one. Everyone in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, Ms. Flippin. Item 12, 2017 Year End Budget Adjustments. Ms. Vanderhyde.
It's that time of year when we're in two budgets, the '17 budget and the '18 budget. So, you voted to make amendments to the 2018 budget. These are primarily bookkeeping-type entries that I need in order for all of our departments to be in the black at year end. And so, the total of these amendments, we have a total appropriation of $342,103.21. And I want to add that that's no local money. Most of that is school board because they had monies that came from the state during the year that was not originally appropriated in their budget. So, that needs to be put in so that all of the dollars that were spent have sufficient funds. And then, there's a transfer of $98,895.81. And we were able to take those monies from budgets that were remaining at year end. So, our auditors require this. All of the departments have to be in the black at year end. And so, if they don't, we actually can go, we have the ability, we being me and Mr. Smitherman, to go through and take monies from departments that have monies remaining at year end. But if they exceed $25,000, you all have to vote on those. So, that's why they're being brought forward to you tonight, so that you can approve those. And so, we recommend that these be approved by you all tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. Board's pleasure.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure, in our recommendation in our packet, it says these will be adjusted in the FY217 budget. Is that
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yes. This one is for the prior year. The one you just did a few minutes ago was for the '18 budget, the new one.
Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the 2017 year-end budget adjustments as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Flippin. Second. Mr. Hagman, second. Any discussion? Any questions from Ms. Vanderhyde? Role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstall?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 13, Moral Obligation Agreement, Axor. Mr. Rowe.
Mr. Chairman, board members, as we went over this afternoon, what you have before you here is refinancing of an existing 2011 finance package for Axor for building upfits and costs. Back in 2011, the term is expiring September 2017. And the company has reached out to American National Bank to refinance the remaining amount of the original finance. So, of the original $2.5 million financing, $1.6 million remains. We have called four different lenders to ensure that American National Bank's quoted rate was indeed competitive, which it is. And part of this process is the board approving and issuing a moral obligation agreement to guarantee American National Bank that the outstanding loan amount would be paid off should Axor default. Axor has never missed a payment throughout its history of, of working with the county's IDA. And as was explained this afternoon, the company pays a debt service payment in addition to the actual just monthly exact finance payment. That amount now is approaching $400,000 that we ultimately put towards the final refinancing if approved by the board here. And the additional collateral is the actual building itself. So, this has been approved to form based upon our county attorney, and certainly we'll try to answer any questions that you will have. And of course, we just celebrated Axor's fifth year here in the county. We do know for a fact that they have turned a year-over-year profit, and now they're up to 19 employees with talks of hiring additional folks.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Any questions from Ms. Rowe? Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the moral obligation agreement in the packet for Axor. Been an excellent employer in our county, and it's an honor to make a motion to approve this agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All right. We'll do this with show of hands, Mr. Hunt?
Um, this should be a role call.
Okay. We didn't have it on the book. Role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barkstall?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Item 14, Disposal of Public Property, Request from Northside High School Alumni. Ms. Smitherman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received a request from the Northside High School Museum asking that we dispose of a very small triangular piece of property that houses a monument. This quote, "deal" was negotiated over a decade ago and needs to be finalized. We need to, if, if it's your pleasure, to schedule a public hearing for your next meeting in September. So, we're looking for you to schedule that, allow us to schedule that meeting, hearing this evening.
Mr. Barkstall.
So, is that the other thing that we need to prove tonight?
Yes, sir. Authorize us to schedule a public hearing.
And at the, the meeting, when this public hearing occurs, we're going to need direction from the board whether they purchase it or we gift it to them. It's valued at about $900. They've been maintaining this for over at least 12 years. So, it's up to the board's discretion if we gift it or make them buy it, but that's your discretion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set up a public hearing.
Motion made by Mr. Barkstall, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on public hearing? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Item 15, Request for Public Hearing Application for Real Estate Property Exemption by Designation, New Perspective Baptist Church. Mr. Smitherman?
Mr. Chairman, you've received correspondence from the Commissioner of the Revenue regarding this request from New Prospect Baptist Church. There are several parcels listed herein that they have requested tax exemption treatment as that these items are owned by the church.
Board's pleasure.
Sorry. And we need you to set up a public hearing. Sorry.
Board's pleasure.
What do you need, a motion to set up a public hearing?
That is correct.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barkstall, seconded by Mr. Hagman. Any discussion on public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to abstain from the vote on this matter. I'm a member of New Prospect Baptist Church.
Mr. Blackstock abstains due to membership of the church, for the record. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous with one abstention. Item 16, Recommendations from Fire and Rescue Policy and Procedure Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we have two recommendations from the Fire and Rescue Policy and Procedures Committee, and the county supervisor that we need to vote on each one separately. First recommendation is that the board recommends that, that we amend the contract with Regional One EMS to cover the, to cover the extension request for $9,4,666.66 to provide service through December 31, 2017, and extend the contract with Regional One EMS for 12 months at $350,000, and authorize the county administrator to sign the amendment.
Second. Comes from the committee. Mr. Trump, don't require a second. Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one point of clarification. The '94 and the period through December 31st is included in the 350. So, it's 350 total, just to clarify.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Smitherman. Any other discussion? Does it need to be a role call, Mr. Hunt?
Um, it probably was.
Okay. Ms. Flippin?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstall?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the second recommendation coming from the Fire and Rescue Policy and Procedures Committee, we recommend board supervisors to create a position of a public safety coordinator and authorize the use of the existing and unobligated capital funds in the Fire and Rescue FY17/18 budget.
Requires no second. Any discussion? Role call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstall?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to board announcements. We'll start with Mr. Barber, since Mr. Barkstall give, give him a break for a second. Mr. Hagman?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Mr. Blackstock?
I'd like to ask that, that we remember the family of Charlie Gunna in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Gunna was a state trooper for 36 years, most of it here in Pennsylvania County. He recently passed away kind of suddenly. But he was truly a public servant and someone who many of us, any community, including myself, who eventually had a career in law enforcement, looked up to. And we'd just like to remember his family in our, in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Scares?
Yes. I just wanted to pass on, my daughter was involved in a serious accident a, a few weeks ago. And I just wanted to publicly thank Mount Cross Road Volunteer Fire Department and the Tunstall Fire Department. They probably sent three ambulances, and there must have been about 20 different individuals parked on the side of the road when I made it to the accident site. So, if you get a chance, thank any of these volunteer fire department guys. They're out there serving the country, our county without any pay for the most part. And, and like I said, my, my daughter's doing great now, but that night, she was in rough shape, and they did a great job. So, I just want to make sure that got passed on.
Mr. Davis?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I have just a, a few. I would like to, on behalf of the board, congratulate Dr. Betty Jo Foster for her new appointment as interim president and CEO of the Davenport, Pennsylvania County Community, County Chamber of Commerce. I, I know Ms. Foster will do a great job as we search for a full-time replacement. Also, like to congratulate Robert Mills Jr. for being for a full-time replacement. Also like to congratulate Robert Mills Jr. for being named state winner of the Swisher Suite Sun Belt Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. That is a great accomplishment for him, and he's huge for our agricultural community, and it was very impressive to read his resume. I think he pretty much won everything there is to win from an agricultural aspect. So we want to send congratulations to him. And also want to congratulate, once again, Pennsylvania County Schools on having 18 out of 18 of our schools fully accredited. I think that's tremendous for the county of Pennsylvania to be able to say that. It's hard to get better than 100%, and that's what they have. Also want to specially recognize Chatham Elementary School in Union Hall for earning the 2017 Board of Education Excellence Award for this year. There was very few recognized by the governor, and they were one of them. So we've got a lot to be proud of within Pennsylvania County. They're raising great children to be our future leaders, so I look forward to that prospect. And also want to thank the Fire and Rescue Policies and Procedures Committee, Mr. Barber, Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Barksdale, for the fine work you've done and what you've brought to us tonight. It's been a long time coming from getting that report, and we appreciate you three gentlemen very much. I know you've been very busy at that, and we appreciate it. And again, I echo the same sentiments with Mrs. Scares to our volunteers. That's great. And before we move away from the board tonight, we want to send our heartfelt thoughts and prayers to the Charlottesville community and hope they have speedy recoveries and all those that were injured and the families affected. Certainly, our thoughts are with them. So we'll move to reports from county administrator.
Nothing, thank you.
County attorney.
Nothing.
We declare the meeting adjourned.